Thank you, everyone, for coming to this meeting on Tuesday, March the 7th of 2017. We welcome you here to the City Council as our mayor makes his way to the dais. We thank you for coming today, and will the city clerk please call the roll?
Yes, we will start with Member Ashby. Warren, Harris, Hanson, Chenier, Gara, Jennings, Carr, and Mayor Steinberg. All right, we do have a quorum. This meeting is broadcast live this evening. There will be a replay on Metro Cable Channel 14 at 7:00 PM on Saturday. If you have a cellphone, please silence it. Speaker's slips are located on the ledge in the back. If you wish to speak, please complete one and turn it in to the assistant clerk at the front. And if anyone should need one, we have cordless microphones and assisted listening devices. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to let everyone know that March is Women's History Month, and in honor of that, we've asked Councilwoman Ashby to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. City Attorney, do we have anything to report from closed session?
Vice Mayor, we have nothing to report out of closed session.
Thank you very much. I do know that we have several special presentations. Would the city clerk please call the first one?
Yes, I believe the first one is not listed on your agenda but was added in recognition of Brendan, I believe it's Keely, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Kylie, okay, and I don't know if that's Member Chenier. Okay, Member Chenier.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Brendan, do you want to come on up? Where'd you go? There you are. So, we have, as the Vice Mayor said, we have a number of distinguished guests today, and Brendan Kylie is one of them. He is a very well-known author and has taken time out to visit Sacramento while he's been in the Bay Area. He received his Master of Fine Arts from the City College of New York. He is the author with Jason Reynolds of the Coretta Scott King Author Honor Book, All American Boys. His debut novel, The Gospel of Winter, has been published in 10 languages. He was selected as one of the American Library Association's Top 10 Best Fiction for Young Adults 2015 and was a Kirkus Review selection for the Best of 2014. He is the author of The Last True Love Story. Originally from the Boston area, he now lives with his wife in Greenwich Village, but we have lots of room for you out in Sacramento if you want to move out. And, you know, a few other things. He has been here. He is visiting a number of schools today. He was at Einstein Middle School at their book club and also at Oak Park Prep. Tomorrow, he's going to Luther Burbank High School. He's going to the youth detention facility. He's going to the North Notomas Library. And I want to thank the Sacramento Library, who really has sponsored a trip out here. Along, Jeff Wong from my office and Member Jennings' office as well have put a lot of time and effort into this. And I heard you were fabulous today out in the schools. And so, thank you for being here. I wanted to give him a few minutes. I think he's going to tell us the story.
I appreciate very much the time to speak, and thank you to the city, to the council, to the libraries. I deeply appreciate being invited to come speak in Sacramento. And I want everyone to know, first off, that I have the great privilege of speaking to young people around the country, and I have for the last 18 months, and I've spoken to more than 40,000 students around our country. And it's a great privilege to be able to do that. I write primarily for young folks because I want to do what people have done for me in my past, which is to inspire young folks to think about what it means to become an engaged and active citizen. And so, I'm grateful to have the opportunity to be here in Sacramento and share those stories. And I'll share with you very briefly, because I think I'm in an audience mostly with adults, and so I want to share with you a little bit about what it meant for me to have an adult who was there for me to inspire me to be who I am today. I want to tell you very briefly about Brendan Kylie when he was in 4th grade. And when I was in 4th grade, I was asked to do an oral report, and I was very nervous about this oral report, but I spoke with my mother and I decided I was going to do an oral report on a collection of myths from the Greek mythology. And so, I got a little zealous, and I got a costume together. I put together a toga. I had a laurel wreath. And when it was time for me to go into the classroom, I walked in with a little yardstick and some tinfoil that I created, a little scepter, and I was Zeus, king of the gods, for my class, which was very exciting, right? But I took this all a little too far because nobody else in class was dressed in costume or anything like that at all, right? I was a zealous kid who was often pretty crazy and often a little wild in class. Luckily, Mr. Leccece took notice of this, and he said, "Brendan, who are you?" I said, "Zeus, king of the gods, tremble before me." And who, what 4th grader does this to an adult, right? But I was, maybe too many, but I took it all very seriously in the moment, and he took me seriously in the moment, which is something that often a lot of adults don't necessarily do when we're talking about young folks. Instead, we dismiss them. We hope to find ways to keep them quiet, and instead, some kids, kids like me, needed someone to say, "You're worth it." And instead of making me sit down for doing the assignment incorrectly, he said, "Brendan, I happen to know that the 6th grade teacher really loves Greek mythology. Would you come with me down the hall?" Now, I want you to know that in that moment, it was very difficult for me not to create an accident on the floor, but luckily, I held it together, and he took me down to the 6th grade classroom. And in front of the 6th graders, I said, "I am Zeus, king of the gods." And it was a beautiful moment, but what he did after that was tell me that he wanted to recommend me for a special gifted and talented program. And this was the thing that really did it for me, and the reason why I want to share this story is that I think it often requires special moments to take the opportunity to empower young folks to be the people they can become. And when adults take the time to recognize those young people, as opposed to thinking them as a collective, but to try to take the time to see them each as individuals, they can become their best selves. And so, why I share that is because I look for those kinds of opportunities as a writer, and when I'm traveling around the country, I try to connect with as many students individually as I possibly can in each and every classroom. So, I'm grateful that I get to do that in four schools and a detention center here in Sacramento. But I also encourage others who are in positions of power to think about how they can create opportunities of empowerment for young folks, what it means to be committed to creating opportunities of empowerment for young folks, and who might those people be who can best offer them those opportunities? And not to make too much of a joke, but I know that I'm in a local government, and I wouldn't presume that the feds would know what's best to do in this moment here, right? I think the local government knows what's best to do here, and so, I likewise think about the folks who are most local to the kids and how we should rely on their wisdom when thinking about how to create opportunities of empowerment. So, that's the last bit I want to share with you all, because I know you have a lot to do today. And I'm grateful to be here. I'm really grateful to speak in Sacramento, and you all have some really awesome kids here, and let's show them some love. Thanks a lot.
Sacramento, give it up for Brendan Kylie. You might make me change my day tomorrow and go see you over at Luther Burbank.
Me too. I'd love to.
Okay, the next presentation, please.
Okay, I believe the next one will be recognizing March 7, 2017, as Arbor Day, and that's Member Harris.
Thank you, Shirley. It's hard to believe a year has gone by since I gave away the last memorial for Arbor Day, but a year has gone by, and I think that our commitment to the canopy and the trees of Sacramento has grown over this last year. So, you know, I think we're in a better place because we passed a new tree ordinance that has a mitigation fund attached to it. We actually just passed the fund piece, I think, two weeks ago. That's a really significant change, and we're about to embark on an urban forestry master plan project, which will sort of guide us into the future in terms of how we want to manage our forest and what kind of canopy coverage goals we're going to set. So, that's a great thing. The city of Sacramento has a wonderful heritage with an awful lot of trees that are over 100 years old. A lot of people don't realize that Arbor Day was first celebrated in 1872 at the request of Julius Sterling Morton in an effort to encourage citizens here to plant trees and protect the natural vegetation. That's something that we're still doing. The Tree Foundation, working with SMUD, offers trees for free to people and guides them in creating their own little piece of the urban forest. And then, of course, there's our urban forestry department, which manages our city street trees and helps citizens work with their own private trees, and will offer a lot of advice on care and how to prune trees, how to water and fertilize. So, there's a lot of information available. So, we're recognizing Arbor Day today. Kevin and Ray, would you mind coming up to the podium? So, Ray Tretheway, the leader of the Tree Foundation, and Kevin Hawker, who's really, he's leading our urban forestry department currently. A lot of people also don't know that in 1976, Sacramento was designated as Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and has been recognized that ever since. So, I won't go through the whole list, but let it be resolved that May 7, 2017, we acknowledge as Arbor Day and encourage all residents and visitors to join together to celebrate this day and to plant, protect, and preserve our trees for future generations. So, perhaps you guys would like to say a little bit about our urban forest?
I just want to say something very brief, and that is that urban forestry has done a lot of work this last year. Sacramento Tree Foundation did a lot of work this last year. All you council members did a lot of work this last year, but ever since 1849, the people of Sacramento have been doing a lot of work every year for the trees, and this is the time for us to celebrate that hard work, that dedication, that passion.
And I'd like to thank Councilmember Harris and also Mayor Steinberg and the rest of the council members, and really a pleasure to see our city manager, my good friend Howard Chan. It is California Arbor Day today, and I just want to share the same, that the Sacramento Tree Foundation is a little bit younger than the city of Sacramento, but we're just getting started. It's our 35th year today as our founding, and we have really grown a strong partnership with the city of Sacramento. But I want to share what you've done up here and your colleagues before you. Just last week, MIT released a study of 25 major cities, and they went out and did Google Street Maps, and they asked the question, "Who has the most canopy in the world?" If you're a pedestrian or in your car or on your bicycle and looking at the tree canopy. We're number one in the country and number three in the world because of investments of years in urban forest services, utilities, public works, everybody working together, because you are the guardians of our street trees. Everybody else plants the other trees, but the city of Sacramento that really has earned this award, did this recognition. Congratulations.
Excellent. Thanks. (APPLAUSE). What? I was here for the Tree Foundation. Thank you very much, Ray and the Tree Foundation, for an incredible legacy that continues. Appreciate you very, very much. Councilmember Warren, I know you have a presentation, sir.
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I'd like to, at this moment, I'd like to recognize some very distinguished people from another country that have come here to visit us. And just a quick story, several months ago, my oldest son was competing in a martial arts tournament in Costa Rica, and I was accompanied by a friend who introduced me to another wonderful person, who I'm going to ask he and his colleagues to come up now to the mic, please. Ladies and gentlemen, the people that are walking up to the microphone right now are from Costa Rica. They've traveled to us from Costa Rica, and they have a very wonderful story to tell. They will not be telling it to us tonight, but they are here touring and meeting with universities, both here in Sacramento and Davis. They're going to the Bay Area, and then, next week, they will be at Harvard University. But the program and the project that they have been recognized for was recently led by a very distinguished mayor, Edgar Mora Altermoreno, from Curitiba, kind of, from Curitiba, Costa Rica. So, he is accompanied right now by Hernan Misis, the president of the municipal council, as well as Sofia Perez, who is the environmental manager. And for those of you that don't know, Costa Rica is a very cutting-edge environmentally sensitive country, and they're doing some exceptional things there. And I'd like, at this moment, before I come down, I wanted to offer you a moment to address the council and the public, but also, I also have several gifts for you all to take back with you back to Costa Rica. So, Mayor, would you please step to the...
Well, first of all, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I salute all of you with great respect. As you mentioned, we come from Costa Rica, which is a country that has been praised to be a champion of environment, and actually, we have in our country most, more than 50% of the territory under some kind of protection scheme. So, we are doing a great job for the planet. But then, we have cities, and cities are difficult to get involved in the environmental way of thinking, basically because for many, many years, we have been building cities in the global south, and I guess elsewhere, as a way of creating an antagonism between nature and cities. And we are devoting our time in Curitiba, which is my city, to erase that antagonism. So, we are inviting you tonight to join with us a project that we call Sweet City. Sweet City is called that way because it relies in tree pollinators to change the way we develop cities, and those tree pollinators are native bees, hummingbirds, and butterflies. And we are building upon these ideas a completely different way of develop cities, and we would like to have you on board as we deploy and we advance in this idea. Basically, we think that recovering the biodiversity for the city will allow us to change infrastructure, to change the habitat, to improve the coexistence between members of the community, and to convert cities that were built to be huge consumers into producers, basically, of energy, food, and water. So, we would like to ask you tonight to think about the possibility of becoming our sister city and join forces in order to create another city, which will be Sacramento Sweet City. Thank you very much.
All right.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to, for you and I to come down.
Yes, of course.
And I would like to present our gifts, I mean, our very distinguished guests with some gifts. Hernan is a baseball fan.
Wait a minute here, I've got to eject. Dodgers. (LAUGHTER). So, this man, this pitcher is the Jack Robinson. (INAUDIBLE). That's okay. (INAUDIBLE). Our professional team. So, you can say it from your mouth. (LAUGHTER). And the joke is that this player, who was our best player, no longer was the king of the game. Also, this is a book from Sacramento and some pens like I have here. And then, this is coffee. Believe it or not, this is Costa Rican coffee. (LAUGHTER). Thank you very much. Well, and thank you, all of you, for having these beautiful seats. (APPLAUSE). for doing that, but we'd be, it's all right, okay? Thank you so much, Ray. Thank you. Yeah. All right, my pleasure.
Excellent. Tonight is a...
Cheer on.
Tonight is a night of presentations, which is terrific, and last but not least, I would like to recognize Sacramento's new poet laureate for 2017 to 2019, Indigo Moore. And let me read part of the resolution that I want to present here tonight. "Indigo Moore has been chosen in a competitive process by a panel of literary experts and a member of the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Commission to serve as the Sacramento Poet Laureate for three years, having been chosen for his noteworthy contribution to literature and to the community. Whereas, Indigo Moore frequently contributes his mellifulous reading voice, the first time the word mellifulous has ever been used in a city resolution, a deep, rich baritone to collaboration with other artists like renowned local bass player Gary Pineta and others. Indigo Moore participates in the National Writers Conference as his association of writers and writing programs, strengthening our city's profile in the field of poetry on the national stage, that you have demonstrated a commitment to poetry as an art form, and your exemplary commitment to increasing the community's exposure to and appreciation of poetry, and your ability to serve as a compelling champion for poetry and literature in our city." We want to commend you tonight, Indigo, for becoming the poet laureate, which is a respected and well-known position in the city of Sacramento. I hope you bring peace and a lot of creativity to our community during your tenure, and I'd like to come and present you and ask you all in coming down to say a few words.
Thank you very much.
Give him a hand, please.
(APPLAUSE). Thank you. It's a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Give us a brief poem.
Thank you very much. It's a great honor to be here, and I know the brevity of poets is one of the things that's appreciated at times like this. I've been in Sacramento since '97, and I've done everything. It's been the last 21 years as an engineer for Intel, but I think it's important, especially when assuming a role like this, to be reminded of your roots. So, I'm going to read one poem from my time in North Carolina, where I grew up. "Uprooted." "It took all our weight to drag the chain over the stump. My brother and I, heaving links heavy enough to strangle hope. Our hands lost in grandfather's big work gloves, slick grass betrayed our bare feet. The tractor vibrated low, hummed, screeched, and began humming again. Smoke marbled gray the blue morning. Where we had once played king of the hill on the stump's weathered face, we now played Judas with an iron-linked kiss. Grandfather spat red fox tobacco, feathered the clutch once to tighten the noose. The engine leaned, a runner into wind, as the chain notched deep into the wood, lover's embrace gone shockingly wrong. The stump shuddered, groaned, wrenched from the earth and tilted skyward. I don't know what we expected. There were no secrets, no ghosts, no magic, only naked roots torn from the soul. We stood with hands at our sides, lost in this tremor song of earth, all of us broken like a promise. Days passed, until each of us were once again secretly hoping enough time had passed for the love that marriage married this stump to earth to slip away. We then laid ax to the rings and released the wood." Thank you very much.
That is wonderful. Thank you so much for your gift and for your continuing contribution. Let us move now to the consent calendar.
Yes.
All right. Are there any, is there any public testimony on the consent calendar?
No, we have none on the consent calendar. It should be noted for the record that we do have items 1 through 12, plus the supplemental agenda, item number 20, that is an item that is a confirmation of board and commission appointments. So, those are the items that will be considered for consent calendar adoption.
Okay. I don't see anybody queued up here, moved and seconded. All in favor of the consent calendar items 1 through 12, plus the supplemental, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstained. That measure passes nine to nothing. Let's go to our public hearings. We do have one public hearing, this is item 13, that is going to be continued to March the 21st. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Moved and seconded.
13. Streetcar.
Streetcar, item 13. Is there anybody here to testify on that item?
We have no one.
Okay. All in favor of continuing to the 21st of March, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstained. Passes nine to nothing. Now, we move to the discussion items on our calendar tonight, and I'm going to ask that items 16, 17, and 18 be consolidated, separate votes, but for purposes of presentation, since they all relate to the marijuana issue. I think it is efficient and appropriate that we take all three at once. We'll take the public testimony all at once, and then we can debate and vote on each of the items separately, all right?
So, we do have two public hearings.
Sorry, there are two. Two of them are public hearings.
So, there's a total of five items.
I'm sorry. Within the three...
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Within the three, there are actually five, because two of them are public hearings.
Correct.
So, it's items 14 through 18. If we can take those all at once, did I say that correctly?
Items 14 and 15 would need to be taken separately with a separate vote, and items 16 through 18 could be heard as a consolidated item.
Oh, so they can't be heard together?
As of the public hearing noticing requirements.
I got it. Okay, then I stand corrected. We will take up items 14 and 15 first.
So, item number 14, then, is an ordinance that amends the city code relating to the marijuana cultivation and the minimum distance from neighborhood parks and community parks.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Kate Gillespie, and I'm the city's planning director. The issue before you now is an ordinance amending Title 17, otherwise known as our Planning and Development Code, to amend the special use regulations of Section 17.228.1 On November 22nd last year, the city council approved an ordinance requiring a conditional use permit, or CUP, from the zoning administrator to permit marijuana cultivation businesses in certain zones of the city. In your motion approving the CUP process, the council directed the interim city manager to develop language specifying a distance required between parks where children play and marijuana cultivation parcels. The planning division staff consulted state law, the city code, and referenced the requirement in each, that the cultivation sites be located a minimum of 600 feet from public or private K through 12 schools. We also reviewed the location of all park sites in the city. The text which we are presenting to you recommends a minimum distance of 600 feet between cultivation sites and neighborhood parks and community parks, as identified in the city's most current Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This draft ordinance includes a provision for any application for cultivation sites located less than 600 feet from a neighborhood or community park, must have a public hearing with the Planning and Design Commission, rather than being heard by the zoning administrator. Reviewing related actions, the proposed ordinance was reviewed by the council's Law and Legislation Committee on January 10, 2017. The committee, by a vote of four ayes, recommended the proposed ordinance be adopted by the city council. Subsequently, the Planning and Design Commission conducted a public hearing on the proposed ordinance at their February 9, 2017 meeting. The commission, by a vote of nine ayes, three nays, and one absent member, recommended that the city council adopt the proposed ordinance. So I do have maps showing all parks, the neighborhood and community parks, and then a third map showing zoning where cultivation is allowed in relation to schools and parks. So this concludes my presentation, and I'm prepared to answer your questions.
Mayor, I'll close the public hearing and move the item.
We don't, we have no public testimony on this?
Correct.
Okay. I know that a lot of work has gone into this by the entire council and by the staff over many months, and I'm glad to see that this is sort of routine, if you will. So thank you. Been moved and seconded. There is no public testimony, no council members. Should we call the roll? Or all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Measure passes nine to nothing. Thank you.
So then our next public hearing is item 15, and it's the operating permit fees for marijuana cultivation businesses. This is Brad Wasson.
Mayor Steinberg and council members, Brad Wasson, Revenue Manager with the Finance Department. Since October of 2015, staff has been working hard to implement medical marijuana businesses regulations to be consistent with the state's Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. On November 22nd, 2016, the council adopted marijuana cultivation regulations, which requires the cultivator to obtain some permits. They will need a conditional use permit for the land use, and then an operating permit. The operating permit applications requires a fee to be established by resolution. I'm bringing this resolution to you now for the council's approval. The council has directed staff to develop city regulations for all types of businesses the state will regulate. Staff is in the process of bringing these through the city's legislative process. Consequently, the application fees have been calculated for each type of marijuana business. Staff has engaged in extensive research and outreach during this process. The largest public concern we have run across is the illegal businesses, especially with cultivation in residential and commercial neighborhoods. Consequently, staff is recommending robust enforcement resources for this project. The total annual startup for city costs of $6,346,000 are detailed on Attachment 4. This includes existing staff working on the project and 32 new FTE. The new FTEs are scheduled to be deployed over time, as indicated in Attachment 3. The $6,346,000 has been split out to the estimated number of marijuana businesses in Attachment 7. The renewal cost has also been detailed in Attachment 5, and costs split out for the marijuana program renewal fees in Attachment 8. Due to Proposition 26, the city can only adopt fees to cover its costs to administer the program, including enforcement. These fees have been calculated with a two-year implementation schedule. Staff will track revenues and expenditures and recommend adjusting fees accordingly as time goes on. Today, we are only asking for approval of the cultivation fees, because the other marijuana business regulations still need to be adopted by council. The specific fees are listed in the resolution on page 19 of the staff report. Class A, up to 5,000 square feet of canopy, initial application fee of $9,700, and renewal of $8,240. Class B, up to 10,000 square feet of canopy, initial application fee of $20,210, and renewal of $17,230. Class C, up to 22,000 square feet of canopy, initial application fee $28,910, and renewal of $24,630. This resolution also has council authorizing the following: addition of the 32 FTE to support the program, establishment of a multi-year operating project to track revenue and expense of the program, and the salary range for the Marijuana Policy and Enforcement Manager. Consequently, I'm recommending that the council close the public hearing and adopt the marijuana program resolution. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer questions, along with the city's interdepartmental marijuana team.
All right. Thank you very much. I know we have public testimony, and so we ought to take that first, and then we'll go to council questions and comments.
Okay, our speaker then is Lynette Davies. Just have the one.
Hello, I'm Lynette Davies of Cannicare, and it took half of my thunder out of this here, because he said that we're only going to be working on the cultivation side, because when I'm reading this, I'm finding that we're actually raising the dispensary fees, and I wanted to remind everybody that dispensaries work for patients only, we're not recreational. And I know that down here, he's got, they've done, that our fees would raise from $12,600, in one spot it says $18,000, in the other spot it says $21,000, then I read another report, $24,000, which would, of course, reflect back to patients, and we don't want to see that happen to our patients. The other concerns that I had is that the money that is going to be raised for this, a lot of it, is going to 12 officers, one person to work directly with SMUD, as they're working and looking for illegal operations. But I want to remind people, when your fees go up, we actually, we actually bring in a black market, and I want to make sure that those, that we are not just switching into an industry that's going to criminalize the public. But that's, that's all I had for this subject. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Davies. Okay. Let me, before I turn it over to Councilmember Shenier, just thank him, first of all, for, you know, your many months and years of work, in addition to Randy Knott and Brad and Joy Patterson and Steve Itagaki, I'm sorry, and all those who I know have really been in the trenches working on this difficult, complicated issue. Really appreciate it. Let me turn it over to Jay, Councilmember Shenier.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of seems like marijuana years are like dog years, seven to one. Working on this for a long time. So just a couple of quick comments, and then I want to move the item, and I know my colleague to my left has a couple of comments as well. So this is a lot of good work, and I want to thank Brad and Randy and the whole team. This is pretty complicated stuff. A couple of points to make on it. One is, and Lynette, this is a little bit for you as we move forward. Number one, I think the fees that we've been charging on dispensaries have not covered our costs thus far, so we need to think about how we recoup all of those costs. So that's a piece of the puzzle, but I think more importantly, over time, and I know all the dispensaries will renew by July, this new piece won't take effect until July, so you'll have at least a year grace period within there. I believe that's correct, Brad, if you want to correct me if I'm wrong on that.
But the fees will take effect in 30 days, but all the current dispensaries will already renew.
Right. So there's a year, there's a year before these new fees would hit, and my hope is in that time, we'll get a better handle on all of these costs. I mean, these are all estimates. We don't know if this is the exact way we're going to end up doing it, so my expectation is that we'll come back on these fees sometime within a year to see what actual costs are and where we are. So I think that's important. On the cultivation fees specifically, I know, I believe this was one, and we've done a lot of different fees here, that originally we had it as one fee, but you've now broken it up into tiers relating to the size of the cultivation site, which I think is very fair. So I want to thank you for doing that. I think that's a step in the right direction as we go forward on this. The other thing, and this is related but not related, I know that some of us have been visited by one of our local labor organizations. We know that in state law, labor piece is a piece of the puzzle that will come through on a lot of these activities. So what I'd like to do is, we'll put that on our law and ledge agenda to bring it back as we move forward with all of these pieces, and we know we have some time on it. So for those folks, I don't know if they're here in the audience today, but maybe Ms. Knott, if you can get the word to those who have come to visit us, that we will be taking it up and working with them, as it is state law. So with that, just thanks. One more piece, we've got other things coming, which I think are all good, and with that, I'll move the item.
Moved and...
Close the public hearing, move the item.
I mean, we can still make comments, or? Yeah.
Close the public hearing, move the item.
Councilmember Brigetta.
Thank you. I've been beaten to the punch on the second here. One, wanted to, again, thank the staff for working a lot on this. You know, the concern that we received was on the enforcement, making sure that the fee correctly counted for the cost of the entire program. And a significant part of the program is the enforcement piece. We know there's a lot of illegal marijuana growers that are in homes in residential communities, and they've caused a lot of problems. They've created violence, they've created problems with the actual properties there, and making sure that we move those operations out of residential homes and in communities and into industrial area, and making sure we get that target right, I think, is critical. And I think we've got a pretty good piece here, and when you look at the budget, that's our biggest component, is enforcement. It's also for those who, for those operators who want to follow the law, submit their application, work with the cities, contribute to the Neighborhood Responsibility Plan, we want to ensure that, that they're, that we're going after the people who are not following those rules, and that it makes an equal and fair playing field for that industry that's happening in Sacramento. I agree with Councilmember Shenier on the fees, that we need to reevaluate them and look at them to make sure that they're, the enforcement is working appropriately. I think we've got a good start here, at least in conversation with some of our department folks, and I think if we get the enforcement piece down, right, it'll make the market and the entire industry much more, much more stable, and understanding to a lot of the community, too. On this, on the UFCW and labor piece and other folks that have approached the, this issue, again, I think one of the key things is, is that we bring this conversation through legend law, so we can identify the issues. I know I've heard personally that we don't want this industry to turn into kind of a turning of cheap labor mill, you know? I want to make sure that this is also a good opportunity for employment. It is a new place where we can help people get more jobs, and, and I think that making sure that we, they get that labor piece agreement piece down right, I think would be helpful. For the bigger part, I think this has been a long conversation, it's included a lot of the stakeholders, and the fact that we're at this point says a lot, that I've heard from other council members throughout the state who've said, you know, that we are actually taking on, taking on a great approach at addressing this new industry in California. And with that, I'll second that. It's already been seconded, so.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. A couple of comments I'd just like to make, again, being relatively new to this issue, I want to appreciate and commend all the work that's gone into these pieces, and agree with both Councilmember Brigetta and Shenier, let's bring this labor piece back, so that we're in conformity with the state, the to-be state law as quickly as possible. But I want to make a broader comment, because I think what we're doing here tonight, what you've done over the last year or so, is really, when you think about it, just the beginning, not the end. Because what I would like to see, and I know Jay and you and the other colleagues are already thinking this way, but what I would like is a broader discussion, maybe in workshop form, I don't know, before the city council, where we look at the other aspects of the legalization of marijuana in California, understanding that there's a potential cloud here with the federal government and their point of view on all this. Because there is always cost benefit here, and there are questions of, do we want to get into the city to allow distribution? There's manufacturing. And I will tell you personally, I'm open to all of these discussions, for no other reason than I keep going back to Laney's dark PERS projection around, you know, lowering the, lowering the investment rate from 7.5% to 7%, and our desire to fund more youth and law enforcement and parks and all the other things that we know are city's priorities. And I think we need to begin diving in now, to look at what the revenue opportunities are here, but weigh that against any of the potential negatives, and to ensure that as we think about the revenue, that we are making specific commitments on the enforcement end, on the, on the drug education end, to, to do all the things we need to do to make sure that if we do embrace the industry in a broader way, that we're dealing with some of the potential downsides as part of our strategy from the very, very beginning. And again, I know this isn't new, I'm not breaking news here, because these are things you're already thinking about, but I want to make sure, just as we have working groups, task forces, we're going to talk about Measure U maybe later tonight, that we are really proactive and upfront in a public way about where we want to go on these sets of issues, because I think there is a tremendous revenue opportunity for us. And jobs. And jobs. And potentially high-wage jobs. But we want to do it right, and let's start now. Very good. One thing to read into the record from our city clerk.
I do, just for clarity's sake, the attachments that are referred to in the resolution should be attached to the resolution as Exhibits 1 through 3. So to be clear that those attachments are part of the resolution. Thank you.
Okay. No public testimony on this, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained? The measure passes again on a nine to nothing vote. Now we can take file items 16 through 18 together, which are discussion items, not public hearings. Ms. Knott, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the city council. My name is Randy Knott, I'm the Director of Government Affairs out of the City Manager's Office, and most recently, part of a wonderful interdepartmental team that is working on this project. They're all here today. Back on November 22nd, the council took action on a cultivation ordinance, and we got direction back from the council on some very specific things, and a lot of those are being discussed tonight. One was the sensitive use buffer zone for parks, which we heard in the first public hearing. The other one was some flexibility in the criminal background check, and a kind of band-the-box, if you would. We went back and talked to all of our counterparts in Denver and Portland and other large cities where they are doing the same thing. They had the exact same requirements for their criminal background check. What we did and what they have done, which we think will work well, is provide a hearing opportunity, should somebody come back with their background check, have something that would be of concern, they would be allowed to have a private hearing with a hearing officer appointed by the city manager to discuss that. There are people who have done their time, served their time, things that are no longer illegal, and we wanted to provide that flexibility. The second item before you is the term of the permit. As you've heard tonight, we've had a number of stakeholder meetings with the cannabis community, with the neighborhood associations, with the business associations. One of the things we asked the cannabis stakeholders was, do you want to have a permit that goes every two years? Because we thought that would be easier, they said actually annually would be better, so we are simply going back to an annual fee for them. And the last one, as I noted, when, when you passed the cultivation ordinance back in November, we also placed a moratorium so we could address all of these other issues. The third and final item is the lifting of that moratorium. heard tonight, we've had a number of stakeholder meetings with the cannabis community, with the neighborhood associations, with the business associations. One of the things we asked the cannabis stakeholders was, do you want to have a permit that goes every two years? Because we thought that would be easier. They said, actually, annually would be better. So we are simply going back to an annual fee for them. And the last one, as I noted, when you passed the cultivation ordinance back in November, we also placed a moratorium so we could address all of these other issues. The third and final item is the lifting of that moratorium, so that will enable us to go ahead, starting on April 3rd, to start accepting conditional use permit applications. Once those are in, we can also start our business operating permits. All of the team is here tonight, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. We do have public comment on this, on all three items. I think we have eight who would like to speak.
Eight of them.
So will you please call them?
Okay, so we'll call three at a time. We'll start with Lynette Davies, and then we have Mac Worthy and Deanna Garcia. Do you want to hear on the, all three items, or just 16?
All three.
All three, okay. First one is on 16, it has to do with the criminal background. And I don't object to criminal backgrounds. I object to how we have this one written on criminal background checks. And that's because people have served their time. We have people down here as being, anybody that's in the staff. So the person who's trimming at $10 an hour needs to have a background check. But the person that owns the cultivation site, or owns 9.9% of it, doesn't need a background check. To me, the person that we would be looking at would be the people that are the actual owners of the cultivation site. You should have 100% background checks on the owners of a cultivation site, and you should not have background checks on staff, management, directors, people that are in charge, absolutely. But if I hire somebody knowing that they're a felon, and they've done their time, as an employer, I want to reserve the right to be able to take that person and give him that second chance, the second chance that he deserves. I just feel that we have taken a look at this, and we've not even given, we've put the person that has had a crime in his background and given him such a disadvantage by not allowing him to work, and the person that has an ownership of this cultivation site and owns 9.9% of it, he doesn't have to have the background check. That makes no sense to me. So I think that I would ask for an amendment that owners, anybody that has an ownership, a shareholder in a cultivation site, have the same restrictions as an employee who does the trimming. The other part is on number 18. I want to, I am definitely for opening this up for cultivation. But I think to be a responsible cultivator, to be a responsible cultivator, we also have to have a track and trace program. Even the state is looking at not giving the permits until the track and trace program is implemented. How can you open up 100,000-square-foot buildings and have them have 10, 22,000-square-foot grow sites in these, and not know that the product is going to a legal area? I think it's remiss, and on the city's part, to put through a cultivation site that does not have some kind of track and trace responsibility. And I think it leaves the city open, if you're going to have hundreds of thousands of pounds of product, a possibility, in this city, and not have put a track and trace and have some kind of knowing where that product is going, that it's not going back into the illegal market or into the hands of children. Thank you. Mac Worthy.
Good afternoon. People, we're hearing things, but we're hearing a lot of mumbo jumbo. Criminal background checks, that's mumbo jumbo. You're going to create criminals. You could have let the regulation alone, and let these people do what they want to do, that was under the medical marijuana, and wait till the state come in and say whether it's going to be legal or not. Then you regulate where we're going to put the building. On the other hand, the kids are in the house with the parents that used the marijuana. But you waste all this time on where you're going to put this building, but the people use the marijuana, the kids in the house. When we look at what you're doing, you're racketeering, because this is money, that's what you're doing. You're using crime to make money, and you're using, especially my people. When I knew, when this stuff first came to America, it wasn't. We brought it to the neighborhood. We know who brought this stuff to the neighborhood. But we're going to look at this and move it down the line and say, when your baby take a butt to the school and arrest it, who going to go to jail? The same thing is to say, well, I didn't lock my gun, and the baby got the gun and he killed somebody. You're going through the same mumbo jumbo. Quit using people and racketeering for funding. That's what you are doing. Wake up, people. The time is now to say, hey, one level of drugs lead to another level of drugs. I know people right here started with marijuana and all the way to cocaine. This is why black folks got crack babies. But you will sell it now because you've become the dealer. Why? Because of the funds that's in it. You knew those funds was in it 30, 40 years ago. Why didn't you deal with it then?
Deanna Garcia. Following Deanna will be Edward Gunno, Kimberly Cargile, and Michael Hicks.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm so excited. I am Deanna Garcia, Director of Alternative Farms. Thank you for moving us into the regulated light. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Wow. And out of the gray area, I have asked to speak tonight due to some very good, caring, and worthy people have not been so fortunate to make it into the finish line of regulation without being brought up on charges from our local law enforcement. I am asking for the city of Sacramento to please forgive the past so we all can move into the future together, into our regulated light that we have all worked so hard for. Thank you.
Edward. Edward Gunno, is Edward here? Is Kimberly Cargile here? Kimberly's next. Following Kimberly is Michael Hicks, and then Tracy Schall.
Good evening. My name's Kimberly Cargile. I'm the Director of a Therapeutic Alternative here in Sacramento. I just wanted to take a moment to thank everyone, each and every one of you that's worked on this issue. I know it's a very difficult issue on both sides, and people have very strong feelings on this issue. I just want to remind the city and everyone here that this cultivation ordinance was written so that patients, legitimate patients, that are using medical cannabis as an alternative to many other pharmaceuticals that are more toxic, need quality-controlled medicine. And that is why we're here tonight, and that is why I wanted to thank the city council and all of the city staff for caring about these people, citizens of Sacramento, and enacting regulations for cultivation. Thank you.
Michael.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council. I'd like to thank you guys for your time during this matter. I'd also like to thank Brad, Randy, and Joy, and the rest of the staff. They've done a great job, commend their effort, and it's been a long process. I look forward to this passage. I would like to look at the social injustice, and hopefully we can work together on something as we move forward. Some of these people were providing patients with a medical product that we did set up businesses for, and those people should be forgiven for that process. But I do look forward to working with you guys moving forward and keeping public safety as our number-one concern, and also bringing education, bringing different things to the table. Thank you very much for your time.
Tracy. Following Tracy is Richard Miller, and the last speaker is Lauren Silverstein.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. I'm Tracy Schall, Executive Director of Power and Alliance, the Property and Business Improvement District in Councilmember Gera's D6, the city's largest manufacturing and industrial zone. As we prepare to lift the moratorium of cannabis cultivation this evening, our property owners would like to acknowledge the members of this council, as well as the city staff, for listening to our perspectives and our concerns, and working together to craft something that we hope becomes a model ordinance for this fledgling industry. The district-specific Neighborhood Responsibility Plan has helped ease our concerns as these facilities come online, and we thank you for your dedication to this particular initiative. As home to 29,000 jobs, many of them manufacturing and high-value employment, and with a less than 4% vacancy rate, there is very little room for error. It is our hope and our plan that we can implement this with the professionalism and the expertise that we've come to expect from our city. Thank you.
Richard.
Good evening. Rich Miller from Americans for Safe Access, and I also work for a therapeutic alternative. I stand before you here very happy. It takes a city, or it takes a village to raise a child. It also takes a compassionate village to help a compassionate patient gain access to their medical cannabis. I can't tell you how pleased I am to know that you are moving forward with this. With so many counties and cities around Sacramento and those patients not having access to their medicine, it's imperative that we move forward with this. And I want to thank you for all your hard work. I want to thank the staff for all their hard work. It could not have been done without them. And I want to thank all the stakeholders that come forward to help put this ordinance in place. Our dispensary ordinance took about 10 years from beginning to end to final permitting process. I was there through all that. As I'm through this with the cultivation, I know and understand as we move forward that there is no perfect ordinance. We do have some glitches in this ordinance, especially dealing with those patients that have been incarcerated for medical marijuana crimes that were growing without permits, and we need to make sure that those people can move forward, because they bring the strains necessary to help those medical patients move forward. I know in time we can work through this, but right now, I want to thank each and every one of you for all your hard work, and commend the staff for an exceptional job done, and in expedient manner. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hey, Lauren.
May please, the mayor and the city council. My name is Lauren Silverstein, and I appear here today off of the Mean Streets of Davis, California. I echo the sentiments of the people that came before me, it's a joke. I echo the sentiments of the people that came before me as to the hard work that's been put in for close to a decade in moving the cannabis community forward. It is really important for me, out of Yolo County, to look to Sacramento as a leader in what's taking place here. And as we advocate for patients and cannabis-related entities in this space, we look to the model that's been set here out of the state Capitol. So I congratulate the people here, the council, the hard work that's gone on, Randy Knott and the City Manager's Office for all their hard work, and all of the folks from the cannabis community who have worked hand in hand with local government to make sure that the best foot is put forward for everybody in the community. So thank you so much.
That is the end of the public testimony. Let's turn it over to the members. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had just a couple of questions. One, first, to staff, Randy and Brad and team, thank you for the work that you've done on this issue. It's a big issue, and I think we've done as good a job as we can do, given the time that we had to work on it. I think that there is room for improvement, and I'm happy to hear the mayor discuss or recommend a retreat to really talk about this issue in its entirety, because I believe that, you know, one of the things that could get lost, you know, as we kind of move towards getting this on the books, is, you know, the opportunity for equity and opportunity for people, where this new opportunity could be a game changer in some of the communities around Sacramento. And so I think that's very important, that there have been people that have been disenfranchised for the very issue that we're now legalizing. And we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to participate, you know, given the criteria that we have before us. And I wanted to just get some clarity as it related to Lynette Davies had mentioned, the discrepancy, as she pointed out, between owners and employees. And so if there truly is a discrepancy, I'd like to hear about that as it relates to background checks and who's allowed to participate. The other thing is really just across the board as it relates to people who have had issues, but they still have a path to becoming either an owner or an employee as it relates to the opportunity. But that then is directed to the city manager's office for his purview, or his staff, or whoever, I guess, is appointed to really go through a process with the applicant to determine their, you know, I guess, ability to adhere to the law. And I know that it's somewhat ambiguous at this point, I guess, and I don't know how far we are down the line towards really putting some, either clarity or a real path, you know, a real path for people to move into now something that has become legal through the city manager's office. And if we don't have the criteria set forth now, you know, how far are we away from really being able to define that path for people that may not be able to come directly through the traditional path?
Councilmember Warren, we have a number of business-type permits that the city issues, and the standard language on the background checks for any ownership of 10% more to go through a background check.
Well, less than 10%, there's no background check.
Right. And that's just been our standard language for all the business permits that we issue. That could be changed if the council wanted to make it for anybody who has any interest.
Is that standard in other cities? That, I mean, is that best practices?
I believe so. I believe that's pretty standard.
Okay. So the discrepancy that Lynette was talking about is for those owners that own less than 10%, and that is standard practice in the industry?
Or for business permits that the city issues.
That's not, that's, I didn't understand. I think she was, it was just the opposite. She was... Go ahead.
I thought there was...
I think what she was doing, Member Warren, was comparing staff. So an owner under 10% would not have a background check, but a staff person working...
But an employee would.
Yes, so I think that was a discrepancy.
And that was the point I was getting to, is that it's more, I guess, a more rigorous process for an employee than it would be for somebody who actually was an owner of the business. And I guess, you know, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong at this point, I'm just trying to understand. And then, if that is the standard that you've seen in other cities, you know, if, I mean, obviously, you're recommending it, right? So you've done some research on it. So I'm just, I guess, asking the question, is that what the intent is?
Yes, and well, it's been our practice, like, for example, on the taxi regulations. So all the owners of 10% or more need to get a background check, and all the drivers who are in cens- employees, although they're independent, they all need to get a background check.
So then, I understand employees getting a background check. I guess I was, it just seemed to me that anybody would, whether they were an owner or an employee, if they were, you know, this industry is still a pretty sensitive industry. So it would seem to me that it would be fair to require all ownership to have a background check, but that's, again, something that this council can take up, you know, as we go through this process. So I don't want to get stuck there, because my, the real concern for me, I mean, the ownership is one piece, and I believe there should be opportunities for people in these communities that have been kind of left behind, but also for employment opportunities as well, and what the pathway for them, when they go through, for instance, they've been incarcerated, you know, I know that, I mean, it says, you know, nonviolent, and it has certain criteria, but if they meet these criteria and they go to the city manager, is there, I guess, the question I'm asking, is it just, it's a discretionary approval through the city manager's office?
Right. It's discretionary now, and the focus would be to look, to see if it was gang-related, that could be problematic, or if it was violent, or if it was a long time ago. So there's things to look at, and not just one thing, to see if, well, this applicant, would make sense to let them proceed with their application. It would be kind of hard to list out all the types of felonies, and then list all of the situations that might make it reasonable to allow a person to go forward.
I guess what I'm just really, I'm trying to get at, is just trying to have as level of a playing field as possible for people. So it's just not some indiscriminate, you know, picking of favorites, you know, for people to have a real opportunity to participate in a... people to have a real opportunity to participate in a burgeoning industry that we know is a substantial money generator, so.
One suggestion, if I might, on that. I think what's important are reports back to the council, say, after the first couple of months, where there are denials, for example, whether it's done with names or without names, to understand why somebody was denied, to see if we can detect any kind of a pattern, right? As long as we have the oversight and we're providing the discretion, I think that's a pretty good combination. It allows for maximum flexibility and speed. At the same time, we should understand if people are being denied, why they're being denied, and be able to weigh in on that regularly.
I think that's fair. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Just as a follow-up, Councilmember Warren, in Prop 64, there is language that prevents us from preventing someone who is guilty of a crime that is no longer a crime. So that helps with some of it, with folks coming into the industry after they have been incarcerated because of what is now a legal industry. So we wouldn't do that. And your other question, terms of equity, we've started by going out and reaching out to the various ethnic chambers. I joined you at Bay Pac. I'll be speaking to the NAACP this Saturday. We met with the Asian Chamber to start getting some of the information out in various languages because we know there are a lot of folks that are, don't even know that this is becoming legitimate, and we want to give them that chance. And there's, the Asian Chamber has agreed to serve as an interpreter and provide some services for us. So we're just starting that outreach, and instead of prescribing it, we want to hear what would help them and go from there.
Okay. That's good. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
I do believe that Councilmember Warren's questioning and your solution to it satisfies my real concern. I really push for ban the box because I believe that if people have made a mistake, if we don't give them an opportunity for a job, then what do we expect them to do? And so, but there is some discretion that has to go along with it. I'm haunted, still haunted, by the woman who came up to me and said she was convicted of a felony 20 years ago, and she still couldn't fill out an application to get a job because of the box that she had to check. So I know that there are people who've made a mistake who are trying to turn their lives around, and we need to give them an opportunity. And I think we can set up a process with some criteria, length of time, length of sentence, what they've done since then makes a big difference, too. But I'm willing to let this play out, and we can have a report back as to who's been denied and why.
Frequently, I mean relatively frequently, so that doesn't go a long time without understanding how it's being implemented. Thank you very much. Councilmember Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we go back to February of 2016 of last year, we, at this council dais, we were acting, I think, quickly to try to respond to the restrictions that we had at that time that are set in place by the state, or we would lose local control. And at that point, the option that was before us, I think, was a little too broad and, well, extremely broad an opening, and so the options that I had proposed was to just ban the industry altogether. But I think that what we came up at that meeting in February was the idea of the moratorium so that we can have a further discussion on that. And since then, we've extended the moratorium to get this right. And I think where we're at today now is a good place where we've looked at the issue of enforcement, we've looked at the issue of, you know, making sure that we can have an equitable chance for others to participate in the industry, we looked at zoning so that it's appropriate in the right communities, neighborhoods. We've looked at also what the amount of checkpoints there are, the, how the, not only the conditional use permit process should allow for levels of review, but even today, we're looking at making sure that we're doing an annual review of the business operating part of the resolution. So we've gone a long way to where we were in February of last year, and it's because we've had a lot of staff time, a lot of community partners, a lot of discussions with both the industry and those who want to work legitimately for the benefit of what a lot of consumers need, which is a medical-use product. And so I think we're in a good place today, and I feel comfortable moving the, all three items, which includes the lifting of the moratorium for, I think, believe it's April 3rd, I think it is? Or, forgot the date. But anyways, lifting the mora-
Is it April 7th?
Yeah, April 7th of 2017. So we've gone a long way from where we were in 2016 to where we are today in moving that item. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move all three items.
That's been moved by Councilmember Geta. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Harris is next.
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilmember Garrett said, this has been a pretty lengthy process. We were really confronted with two choices, which is do nothing and let the state regulate marijuana in our city, or take the bull by the horns and try to forward, sort of, take control of our own destiny, if you will. And that's the path we chose, and it has not been an easy one, and we've really wrestled with these issues. There has been a tremendous amount of discussion about every minute aspect of regulating marijuana. It's a difficult industry. It still leaves me unsettled personally, and there are many decisions yet to come. But the one thing that's good about this is that we really do control our destiny as a city in terms of managing this industry, rather than getting steamrolled by the state and having no say in how things develop. And as the mayor mentioned, you know, the interplay with the federal government is still dubious, it's still somewhat unknown, and there are many questions yet to be answered. But we're putting a lot of effort into this, and I think I would agree with Councilmember Garrett that we've, we've come a long way, and we're more or less getting it right. There are some things that we don't know how they're going to work, so we're going to try it, but we're leaving ourselves the option to fine-tune as we go. And there will be a lot of scrutiny as this industry takes shape, and we are going to have lots of opportunities to fine-tune, to tweak things, to make sure that the decisions we made have been proper and are working well. So I think that with all the effort that's been expended so far, I'll certainly support these motions. And I just want to put people's worries to rest that we're not done when we take this vote. We're really just getting started. There's a lot more work to come. We'll see what this industry develops into and how it affects our city economically and sociologically. We've put safeguards in place already, and we stand at the ready to put in more if we need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ashby.
I won't repeat everything that Councilmember Harris just said, but I agree with many components, particularly the dubious nature of the relationship between local governance, state governance, and federal governments on this very complicated issue, and how the Constitution plays into that conversation and what role we really have. I have been skeptical of marijuana from the beginning, not a surprise to anyone paying attention to what the city of Sacramento is doing. That being said, ordinances need to be in place to keep this organized and moving forward, which is why I supported the first two issues today. Particularly of note is the addition of the 600 role, the 600 role with parks, which I think is important, particularly to me, and making sure that we protect kids and we step out as best we can on this issue. I do hope, Councilmember Garrett or Councilmember Chenier, whichever one of you looks at the next iteration of this, I hope as this issue evolves for our region that we take a better look at delivery, and particularly delivery versus storefronts and the negative impacts that communities get when there is a storefront versus delivery. And the other piece is, I agree on the inventory tracking component. I think we've missed the mark on that completely. I've seen a couple examples recently of a better way. And I think that better way would allow us in these early years to figure out what the impacts of marijuana really are on our community. And if we're not tracking what's being grown, we really have no way of auditing what is being taxed, nor do we have any way of knowing how much of an impact it has on our community, how much is being sold, or where it's going, or who's getting it. So for me, item 18 is particularly premature. I understand what Councilmember Garrett went through and why we did the moratorium. I obviously was in favor of also just stopping for a minute, but what we did was sort of press the pause. I am not going to support item 18 because I do not believe that we should lift the moratorium without setting some caps, which is not done. And we talked about precedent-setting and taxi cabs and things like that. We set caps in those industries, and we've not done so here. I am not interested in seeing Sacramento be overwhelmed with cultivation or the industry of cannabis. I don't think it strikes the right balance, and I think it lacks the piece necessary to track the inventory through our community. So I hope on Councilmember Garrett's motion, we can take each item in turn, and if not, I will vote no on the package. Otherwise, I will vote no on item 18.
The motion, if I may, separate, it's a full motion, but we'll take it as separate votes, of course. Okay? Councilmember Chenier.
Yeah, just real quickly to kind of wrap this one up. So it has been a lot of work, and again, we have a team, Mr. Itagaki, who is our attorney on marijuana and has become an expert in all this, and Randy and Brad, and I know we've got others. Could we have the whole team stand up just so we can recognize? Are there more here, more of you guys here? So these are the folks that have been working on this. You know, we're charting a lot of new territory here, and I will say, I did a presentation at Leadership California today. I did it with Lori Ajax, who is the marijuana czar for the state of California, and she continually referred to Sacramento as kind of a model for what we're doing and leading the way. So that's really nice to hear, and the fact that we're being recognized for that. So, and Mr. Mayor, just to kind of lay on the table what staff is currently working on, which will come, and I think if we could, I think having an overall discussion on this in a retreat or workshop, however, would be a really good thing to have. So we still have to deal with manufacturing, which are very high-paying jobs and very small footprints, distribution and delivery. So all of these things are complicated issues. I know a lot of my colleagues have gone out to visit a lot. I would suggest if you haven't, you can talk to Randy and Brad, and they can set you up. I think these things are pretty interesting to go take a look at, particularly the manufacturing at this point. So with that, again, I just want to say thanks and look forward to voting on this and being able to move forward.
I, again, thank you to all who have done this and have gotten us this far, and I appreciate sort of the time. Within a month, six weeks or so, I'm told that we will have the distribution, the manufacturing, and maybe the delivery pieces before lawn ledge and/or then the city council, which will be very good. Soon after, I do want to have a full council meeting to look at all this in the big picture, not to stop, but to ensure that we are focused, again, on the following. Because you have to always step back and ask, what's in it for the public here? Are we, do we have the potential to gain substantial revenue for the things the public expects us to deliver on? Are we creating high-wage jobs? Are we going to use the right amount of revenue for enforcement of the underground industry that would continue to exist? And fourth, are we investing the revenue, some of the revenue, in drug addiction, drug education and addiction services? I think those are the four sort of big-picture things that I want to make sure that we focus on as we, as we move forward here. So let's take these next, or let's consider these next couple steps, then let's look at this holistically because it's also very important in terms of the budget deliberations that we are going to have, not just this year, but as we plan our future years as well. Thank you. Let's take items, let's take them one at a time. Item 16? I'm sorry. Yes, of course, Ellen. Sorry. Councilmember.
I just wanted to, you know, Councilwoman Ashby brought up a good point just about, you know, sure, impact. And I know we've had a brief discussion about whether we should put a cap on and measure how this initiative is being implemented in our city and the impacts. And so I don't believe it's too late to do that. I am interested in that as well, particularly being one of the districts that will be most heavily impacted by this issue. However, I think I'm comfortable in waiting to have a discussion based on some of the early feedback we get, as well as, Mayor, from your retreat, to have this issue on the table of whether we should then consider having a cap to really evaluate the impacts that this new issue is having on our city, rather than open the floodgates and let everybody run in and then try to correct it. So it's a discussion that I want to have that I hope will be constructive, but also with the sensitivity of knowing that communities that can least afford to deal with more issues will be the ones that will be more and disproportionately impacted by this issue.
Right. And you keep on that because that, we need to obviously keep being reminded of that.
Okay. So as I said, I'm comfortable at this point with having that being brought back to council and also having a more deliberate discussion about this at the mayor's retreat, so.
Which we will.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's take item, is it 16 first? Okay. Are we, is that, if that's presumed unanimous, all those in favor of item 16, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstain. That passes nine to nothing. Item 17, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstain. That passes now on a vote of nine to five. Item 18, please call the roll.
Okay. Councilmember Ashby? Warren?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Chenier?
Aye.
Garrett?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
And the mayor?
Aye.
That's a eight to one.
Eight to one. That's eight to one. Very good. Thank you all, everybody. To be continued. Very good. Appreciate it. We have one more important item, actually, so let's, if we can. Everyone could please leave loudly. Everyone could please leave with as much noise as possible. Please continue to make a racket.
Two bags.
Six.
On this item?
Three.
Who's this?
New day. I want to read this. Hold on. Can I do this?
Okay. All right, now we're going to get serious. Thank you very much. We do have one more important item today.
This item is a discussion item. It's the update on the police department general orders related to safekeeping of property.
Very good. Chief Louis, this is the report back on the general orders regarding confiscation relating to the homeless issue, and I, we're all looking forward to this. I've had a chance to review this ahead of time, and I hope that the council and the community, and many of the folks out there, you know, that come to the council meeting on a regular basis on these issues, will be pleased with this development. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. Brian Louis, your interim police chief. It's my pleasure to be here to provide an update. Following a recent council discussion on- Following a recent council discussion on our general orders regarding safekeeping of personal property, reporting back from the February 14th council meeting, as I previously discussed, you know, the Police Department at all costs, not a cost, but just, we try to minimize the amount of impact to our community, especially when it comes to confiscation of personal property, and we only collect items as we deem necessary as a last resort. It's not only a storage capacity issue for us, but it's also, we understand the compassion issues of dealing with, especially with our homeless population. Our existing policy, as I previously discussed, didn't really articulate how we would handle personal property of individuals that we're not going to confiscate property. So we went back as our leadership team and looked at our existing policy and made some revisions to it, basically an addition that has language that outlines department policy on how we will deal with property of individuals that are not under arrest, there's no enforcement action taken. So I do have some draft language that I'd like to display to all of you on the overhead. So if you take a look at item number five, it's bolded in red, that's basically the language that we developed that will cover illegal camping.
Looking at item five, correct, chief?
Yes, item five. So it discusses illegal camping enforcement, evidence and property. It's the policy of the Sacramento Police Department, that personal property shall not be removed from individuals except when necessary for evidence or safekeeping. If no enforcement action is taken, the officers shall not book or remove any items from the scene unless the owner requests the disposal of the property or it is determined to be abandoned. And under A5, it talks about the 24-hour notice to vacate exception. When appropriate, officers shall attempt with the owner's consent to find a caretaker for the property in lieu of booking for safekeeping. If an officer encounters an unoccupied or unattended encampment on personal, on public property, he or she shall not remove the property without following the 24-hour notice to vacate procedures. Basically, it's SPD Form 1.
So key question, is a citation considered enforcement action?
It is enforcement action, but it doesn't necessarily result in the actual confiscation of property.
For purposes of this policy, a citation will not lead to the removal of property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Also with me is Sergeant Greg Galliano, who is the sergeant of our Impact Team, and he's also able to add any particular comments or questions that the council may have relative to the actual, the day-to-day operations of the Impact Team and our work with the homeless population.
Okay. Very good. We do, are you, please finish.
Just one other thing I wanted to touch on lightly. There was comment about how at our warming center, the C warming centers, and how we're contacting individuals who are there to get out of the inclement weather, and a discussion came up, or questions came out relative to whether or not we are actually searching items or searching individuals as they come into the facility. And I mentioned in the last week, yes, we are doing so, but the purpose of it is to make sure, basically, we're trying to ensure a safe and sober environment for everybody that attends those facilities. That's not only for the people from our community that are attending there or trying to get out of the elements, but also for the volunteer staff and city staff that actually work in those facilities.
How long does it take to get people through the search?
I'll defer that to Sergeant Galliano.
Welcome, Sergeant.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm not 100% sure on how long it takes to get everybody through, but for the most part, the officers and sergeants who work at the facility report back to me with any issues. There have been no complaints of a large timeframe or a large lag time to get everybody through the doors. It's a quick process.
Quickly as possible. Okay. Very good. Councilmember Harris, well, let's see, there's public testimony here. Do you want to wait on the public testimony, or do you want to ask? Okay. Thank you. Let's hear from the public on this issue.
Okay, we have three that are signed up to speak, Mac Worthy, Pastor Gainsborough, and David Andre. Mac? Mac, leave.
I want to speak on it, too. Yeah, me, too. I don't know what that is.
For item 19.
When you signed up, it could be you're in the public comment, not on the agenda, but we're happy to move you up, of course. So, yeah.
Oh, I see here. I do see.
Oh, yeah, let's put those in that pile.
Okay, so I see one. So Mac Worthy's not here.
Mac Worthy's not here.
So Pastor Gainsborough, and then David Andre, and then Brayden Murphy, and I'll go from there.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
I was glad there were some dubious comments by the council as far as the actualization of full speed ahead with recreational marijuana legalization, but...
That was the state voters, by the way.
Yeah, the Lord refrained me from jumping in on that, so I will stay on the focus that, you know, that my heart is focused on. I'm really glad to hear about the clarification, Chief Louis, with the citation or 24-hour notice, like the, to kick a person when they're down is something that we all despise, and I know that the police do, as well as the council, as well as clergy, as well as every decent human being, so I'm really glad to hear. The people that are on Garden Highway that have been not able to get into the South Side Clubhouse, you know, for shelter, I've really been glad to see that their tents were not removed. I don't even know that a public restroom maybe is there in Porta Potty, I'm not sure, but with this issue, I just know that seven or eight years ago, the city was fined half a million dollars and the county two-thirds of a million dollars for the confiscation of property with the safe ground or the tent city. And so to not have a clear policy was really something that needed to be addressed, and I like the policy. Would that mean that the, those tenting out there would get a notice, even when the river goes down, that they would be confiscated for their property 24 hours later? I thought it was 72 hours, I know. But just question, if that's allowable?
Go ahead, answer the question. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you. You answered the question. Time's up. Go ahead.
Now is it working? Okay. Sorry, first time here.
It's okay.
For the most part, the 24-hour notice requirement requires officers to post abandoned or potentially vacant campsites with a notice, allowing the owner, should they exist, and maybe we just haven't contacted them or haven't been able to find them, that their encampment needs to be moved, or they need to make contact with us in some shape or form.
Thank you, Pastor.
I'm glad to hear it, and thank you for getting clarification on this issue. God bless you all. Thank you.
Mac Worthy's back. Mr. Worthy, we called your name, but you weren't here, but now we'll invite you up.
I'm saying, on this issue, I didn't hear the presentation from the Police Department, but I've been active here for quite some time. When a car is impounded years ago on city property, if you had a toolbox, a jack, a vacuum, it wasn't there when you get to go to get your car. So who took it? There is a report to every time a policeman arrests someone, there's a report is made out. That's due process. That's across the board. There is items there that we can't accuse the police of taking it, because no facts that that person should have that type of item, these things go on here. See, people, I had, one of the FBI agents over on Auburn Boulevard used to come to Oak Park, and we sit down and talk. We allowed the city council to use the homeless people. Same thing I said about Mayor Warren, for racketeering, for funding. I was right here when that guy came here with the $500,000 check from Virginia, after Stepford came here. Who in this town would have had a numerous $500 check other than tagging signs? And it went from there on its own. People tried to get people to work with these guys, sit down and talk to them, instead of pinning them against the people that can't represent themselves. The homeless can't represent themselves, they're not even organized. I have tried to talk to them, not even. You've got to be organized to go up against a government, and they're not, and they're getting used, and it's going to continue and continue to get used in this town, and the city going to make good money. But you will not cover the housing situation on the back of the homeless, because you haven't showed how many homeless that have the ability to go in an apartment. You've got apartments everywhere in this town, you've got houses. It's depending on who owned the house. You can have a house in Beverly Hills, if you don't overbeak note on it, you can let the people stay in it, as long as they don't tear it up. But see, Sacramento going to have to bring free enterprise in and help us, help the people level the playing field.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
On what we call homeless and not respecting the Police Department.
Okay, David. The following, David, is Brayden, and then I believe Richard Wake was the one who wanted to speak on this item. Okay, hold.
That's okay.
It's okay.
Well, hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, guests. I have a couple of questions on the clarification. Can this be used to push people towards the county in some way, that we could, like, keep moving people's campsites until they're forced to be in the County Rangers jurisdiction? Because that seems to be happening right now. The County Rangers are confiscating things, and people that I talked to say that it got too hot over here and they had to move because they were losing their stuff. So are we, is there something like that?
That's not the intent or purpose in any way of this.
We're sure, though? I mean...
Yes, it's to clarify the city policy that we're not going to confiscate the property of people who are homeless. The only exception being is if they're actually arrested for a crime unrelated to their homelessness. That's the, that's the policy.
Thank you for clarifying that, sir. The other thing that, who's taking the complaints at the warming center that people aren't complaining about being searched and being out in the cold waiting? I know that was mentioned, that there was no complaints. What's the apparatus for people making complaints? And along with that, who actually came up with the language that says that people have to be sober inside? Is there, are we kicking people out if they look like they're under the influence? I kind of want some clarification on that, where this whole search thing's coming from. Thank you.
Why don't we, we'll get back to you on those questions, David, okay? Thank you.
Okay, Brayden?
Welcome, Brayden.
So the mic wasn't working, I'm going to try this one, this is working, right?
That works, thank you.
So I'm not homeless, and I'm not a cop, and I'm not an attorney, and so honestly, the whole thing gets confusing, and I don't necessarily know exactly what it all means, although I'm glad that we're talking about it. So I hope that all of you, I know the council speak is going to be after the comments on this, will clearly lay out what a member of the 2,000 homeless in Sacramento City, what they should do, what you recommend that they do, and how they should handle themselves. If they have a sleeping bag, can they use it on the sidewalk? If they do, what will happen? If they have a sleeping bag and they use their sleeping bag on steps, if they do, what will happen? If they have a tent, can they pitch it? And if they do, what will happen? And if they can't do those things, what should they do? And then when we realize that there's 1,900 people homeless that don't have anywhere to go, then maybe that's when we declare an emergency and we start backing Mr. Warren's attempt to desperately solve the issue that desperately needs to be done. And I would just ask to bring clarity, for you guys to bring clarity, as to specifically exactly why, what they should do, and then after you've done that, clearly explain, so it can be in the public record, why you don't think you want to better these people's lives by allowing themselves to pitch a tent or start an encampment or whatever you can do, and just kind of lay out a clear path as to, if I'm homeless and the center that holds 40 people or whatever, I'm not going to plan to be an expert on it, you guys are the ones that should be the experts, and this should be the number-one issue that's most importantly talked about. So I just want to know, all my homeless friends, what do I tell them to do? And after you all speak, it should be really clear what I can go out and tell these 500 people that I can see, and if there's not a very clear something that I can tell them as to where to go or what to do with their stuff, then let's declare an emergency and start getting behind Mr. Warren to make an actual difference for these people. Thank you.
Thank you, Brayden.
Richard Wake?
Mr. Wake? Of course. Of course, of course, of course. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Richard Wake, I'm a resident of City Council District 5. And I'm speaking, I'm a little bit emotional about this issue tonight, because one of my best friends from Sac State that I was with in the Young Democrats named Jim Cook, who has a bachelor's degree in communication studies and was recently employed, he lost his job at the Franchise Tax Board, and he is homeless right now, and he's working to try and resolve those issues. So have I seemed a little bit emotional about this, that's why. I totally agree with the sentiments that the gentleman spoke here. I think the only way that we're going to stop the confiscation of materials or the stuff from the, or the things from the homeless people is just to end the camping ban. That's what I believe. And I do believe, I think I totally support what Councilmember Warren is doing to open up a shelter out in his district. This should be a no-brainer. People have died out in the streets, and I think it should be fairly easy for the council to come up with four more votes, to get a majority, and allow Councilmember Warren to do that. Councilmember Hanson also rightfully pointed out that all three of the warming shelters are in his City Council District, City Council District 4, at a meeting a few weeks ago. Everyone should be sharing the wealth in this. Every one of you should be able to open up a homeless shelter in your City Council District. It should be done. And, you know, if we need a triage center to do that, I've mentioned this before at the Board of Supervisors meeting, the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and at previous City Council meetings for a triage center, we have a place to do that. It's called the Sleep Train Arena out in North Atomas. There are kitchen facilities out there, there's plenty of places for beds, there's restrooms, there's showers, there's office space to set up place, and in every city or council district, there are vacant schools and public properties and other types of private properties that can be leveraged to open up homeless shelters. So I think the only way to stop the confiscation of things belonging to the homeless is to end the camping ban, and let's get behind Alan Warren's proposal to open up a homeless shelter in his district. I wholeheartedly support you in that, Councilmember Warren, and I think that if you went out to the various City Council districts and met with people at the community level, you know, at the neighborhood centers, and did like a little tour of the city, I think you would find that you have vast support for that, so you could put more pressure in the City Council and get four more votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that is it on this item. This was just an information item, important information item. Thank you to the city manager and the police chief for following through, and Sergeant, thank you as well. All right, that is the end of the...
Good to be here. My name was up there also.
Well, we're going to go to public comment here for items not on the agenda. You're welcome to give a comment there, is that okay? We now go to items, oh, we got, I'm sorry, on this item, I, I forgot you. Not on purpose. Before we move on, Councilmember Harris, go ahead.
So, chief, as far as going through people's items when they enter a warming center, have you confiscated any weapons in any of those searches?
Don't have any stats on it, but I'm not aware of any items that have been confiscated. I do know that on occasion, they'll have items that are basically held for safekeeping while they're at the facility, and they're returned back to them when they leave, like medication, cigarettes, and stuff like that.
Hey, actually, at one of the warming centers, I did see a knife that was confiscated, but the point is, it's returned to the owner after their stay at the warming center.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I think that's an important point. You know, what we're trying to do at these warming centers is to promote the health and safety of everybody involved, and, you know, quite frankly, some of the behavior amongst the homeless community can be erratic at times, and it's, I think, a very good idea... be erratic at times, and it's, I think, a very good idea to remove any items that could be used as a weapon or could, you know, just create an incident that we don't want to have at the warming centers. The point is to keep people safe and warm and to promote health. And I wanted to make it very clear that those items that may be taken away from an individual, as the chief alluded to, are returned. That's an important piece for people to know. Also, Mr. Wake, there are warming centers in districts other than District Four. I wanted to make that clear to you. And also that we're working very hard to create other spaces that we could use for shelter in a more permanent fashion, indoors, which would certainly always be my preference to outdoors. We're working hard on these issues. I know that patience is expended. I understand this is the wettest year in recorded history to date, and that's one of the reasons that you're finding an awful lot more people on the streets of Sacramento, because they have heretofore often camped in our riparian areas. But they can't do that because there's too much water. So it's, it's very visible right now, and I understand the impatience, but really, the only, the only answer for homelessness is housing solutions, triage, helping people move through their issues, and hopefully get them on the path to building a more productive life. And we're moving as quickly as we can in, in those regards. And as I've said several times here, I think that you're going to see some very dramatic results this year.
I think we'll proceed with public comment. We'll start with Mac Worthy, Mary Tappel, and Roland Reeves. Mac?
Mr. Worthy?
Yes, so we had heard there would be a resolution on safe haven, safe haven cities. What happened to America's Constitution? And we, we here, we talk about the police do this, and then, then we're seeing on this side, the election officials saying we're not going to respect fellow. I went to two different neighborhoods, not a word is said about immigration. Same old thing with the past 40 years, crime and education. Beautiful. And then we look at the business in one neighborhood, and as many folks come through here, talk about high technology, I think you gave me $500,000 here for high technology. It was only some Asian people had a hotel and a furniture store. But yeah, who did you give the $500,000 to? For entrepreneurs? They couldn't show up? See, these are the things that are killing these people. And when we make a resolution to hire a criminal, I have to wonder about you. And then we see that a young black man will resist arrest and run and get shot in the back and nobody. And we got three people, black, on the city council, request a resolution. Wow. They can only vote to what the people put on the table. I, that's all they can say. That is because of that qualification to get here. I didn't choose them. Who chose you? I didn't do such thing. I don't commit that type of crime. I stay away from it. What can a supposed to be football player and supposed to be a developer and a smart board can do for economy? Nothing, people. We got two, three attorneys now here. Attorney does not create a business. Your accounting is move your business. Why don't we go in a different direction?
Mary?
Good evening, Mary.
Hello. I'm Mary Tappel, again, here to talk to you about lack of public safety and sanitation and any kind of attractiveness of our big Two Rivers Trail along the Lower American River Parkway. This is the paved multi-use trail that extends from Discovery Park on the South Bank, just upstream. It starts out just upstream with a big public beach at the confluence of our two great rivers, and it goes on up to 12th Street or Highway 160 crossing. When you, when you get up there, even though the city had three vehicles just yesterday morning, you find that the garbage is still there, littered all over the ground. Apparently, the city was only picking up garbage that had been willingly bagged by people who were there camping illegally. And they are very much back at the river's edge. Yes, they are also on the water side, dozens of them already along the Two Rivers Trail. And they followed the water back down. And this garbage needs to be picked up, and it needs to be hauled out. It's benefiting no one, it's hurting everyone, and it also includes rotting food, so rats are attracted, and they're another health hazard. And when this area is wet from the rain, it smells, this whole stretch smells like a fecal matter. And we have, in addition, some sites that, well, you know, this is not survival gear. This looks like someone's doing bicycle sales, and at this time, bicycle thefts are epidemic in Sacramento. And I, I have a small grant project through the Department of Utilities. We do minor, minor environmental cleanup and helping water in trees in the summer. And this was one of our, the bigger bike giveaways where Councilman Warren was also at. And one of our, our volunteers, who was only 10 years old, he got his bike stolen from him. It happened to be in the Oak Park neighborhood, but it was with physical violence. So this is really hard to see on the parkway, and we've had such nice ways of trying to get kids' bikes. We want this parkway safe for kids, and we need it safe for everybody.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Hold on for a second. I think a couple councilmembers want to respond. Councilmember Warren?
Let me just say, Mary, thank you for your, for your comments and continuing to keep these issues before us. And, and obviously, I mean, I know the long history of, of, of your work in trying to promote, you know, the waterways and the bike trails and such, and you and your family and others gave bikes to people in District Two, which was a big hit. Let me just say that the city manager and I, and I believe some of the other council members, we've began to discuss a program that's going to roll out very quickly to spend a lot of resources in cleaning up the various stuff that you talked about, including along the levees, bike trails. We want to recapture those amenities for public use, safe public use in our, in our city. The city manager just walked back as well, but he, in fact, just today, we talked about galvanizing city resources. And coupled this with a project that I want to propose for District Two that will help, I believe, take a big bite out of the homeless issue in District Two. And so it's something that I'm going to talk about in public comment. I'm going to ask the city manager to agendize for either next week or the week after and, and have a discussion, but really to, to really take these unsightly, unsanitary situations and, and really take back our community so that we can have the, you know, the, the public amenities that, you know, that other communities take for granted, in which we, we obviously have to deal with a lot of other things in our community, and so we really want to recapture that. And so there's going to be some, some things coming out of City Hall, and I hope, and in fact, I know you'll be participating and help us achieve our objectives, but we're going to, we're going to put some resources behind it.
How would I know when it comes up to the city council?
It's going to be very loud. It will be loud. In two weeks, city manager is, in fact, go ahead, Howard, if you-
So we're going to talk about this in open session and talk about the timing and what the expectations are for this item to come back in two weeks relative to the project we spoke about earlier.
Let me just say, Mary, that a large component of it is cleaning up the community. So it is a strong homeless component, but it is even bigger in terms of cleaning up the very issues that you pointed out on your illustration. So according to the city manager, we'll have it on the agenda in two weeks.
Okay, Mary, if you'd be, if you'd be patient, Councilmember Harris also wants to make some comments.
Mary, thank you for your concerns. You've come to council many times and showed us a lot of pictures of trash. You know, we've had a discussion about not confiscating possessions from the homeless and keeping that equitable. At the same time, we clean up hundreds of cubic yards of trash left behind by the homeless. And we have to be mindful of that, that this is very costly to the city. I would like to lot our impact team because I know that on Steelhead and Arcade Creeks, two creeks that I know you have an interest in, we actually did remove about 100 cubic yards of trash before the rains came. Unfortunately, we couldn't get to a lot of it, and a lot of it washed downstream. And to me, that's unconscionable. I share your concerns. I share them every day. Councilmember Warren is quite correct that the city manager is putting together a program so that we can get after a lot of this trash. As you point out so often, it's not only in District Two, it's in every district of the city at this point. There are piles of garbage everywhere, and I find that absolutely unacceptable for, you know, for our, for our constituents, homeless or not homeless, to live with those kinds of piles of trash. You know, I wish I could wave a magic wand and make it such that homeless people wouldn't create that kind of mess, but they do, and so we're charged with dealing with it. And we have to deal with it more effectively. The last thing I want to leave you with is that we see this, again, as a regional issue, and that Regional SAN, our sanitation district, we talked about, and we are working towards creating a coalition of Regional SAN Safeguard D1000, American River Flood Control District, all the players who work in and around our riparian areas to create a large pile of money to deal with this. You know, we're looking at about $1 million to be focused just on garbage removal from our waterways. So I think that we're going to achieve relief. It can't come quick enough for me or for you, but believe me, we're taking it seriously, and I appreciate your efforts always.
Yeah, I'm glad.
And even though it's not an agendized item, it's once again a reminder that we are going to continue to deal with this endlessly unless we are focused not just on short-term relief, but on long-term solutions to this problem. 1,600 housing units and vouchers, $30 to $40 million worth of services over the next couple of years. Triage and case management, let's get after this, and let's get a couple thousand people off the street permanently, and then have enough money left over to be able to prevent the next 1,600 to 2,000 people from becoming homeless. Thank you, Mary.
Okay, Roland Reeves? And then Pastor Gainesborough?
Good morning, or good evening, Mayor and council members. Quick compliment to Jeff, to David, your staff member. Just on the phone with me the other day, it must have been 15 minutes to half hour, just listening, listening, listening. Totally appreciate it. Basically, was relating to him, next door neighbor, you know, on the next door neighbor, this is just, we're talking about homelessness here, of course, you know, in South Natomas particularly, we're really impacted, and I know the rest of the districts are. But just talked, you know, with me about a half an hour, I don't know how long, I lost track of time, and he tried to help on a couple of issues, didn't quite turn out like I wanted it to, but at least he was listening. Next door neighbors, people, there's just hundreds of people posting every single day on this issue. I mean, there's just on and on and on and on. And it's, it's not complaining. I mean, yeah, it's complaining, but a sort of consensus, or at least an evolving concept is starting to develop from all these people interacting. And I think one of them is that everybody seems to just kind of, you know, this isn't the pie in the sky, but large safe habitat buildings where you can take people, and Mayor, like you said, it's, it's going to be, it would be a permanent place. They would stay there. Next to the building would be a, you know, you'd bring them initially there, and that's where they, they have a roof over their head, they have bathrooms, they have showers, and they, they can stay there. Just a big, open warehouse type thing. Next to that, you have maybe an upgrade building where those who want to go through the filtering process and start getting off drugs and take advantage of the services can go. But the people who come into the initial building, it's just a big warehouse, but it's, there's security, they have a roof over their head, and not going to the bathroom in our neighborhoods, people, this is extremely gross thing that's happening in our neighborhoods. It's, you know, I don't think people downstream are going to appreciate the fact that the people on the levee there that are living there right now are defecating-
Thank you.
You know, I mean, I hate to say it, but, and that's leaching down into the river. I mean, it's very bad, you know? So, but we have to have a permanent solution. People in South Natomas are upset. You were a real trooper the other day when you faced that crowd, and that was, you handled that quite well. We're going to have another meeting on Saturday at 10 o'clock, so-
Not, we're not-
No, I know.
Neither Councilmember Harris nor anyone on this council is shying from the issue.
No, no.
But thank you.
Yeah. I get the feeling, though, that the city's starting to-
Pastor Gainesborough?
Yeah.
We are-
Yeah.
We're going to, we are going to turn the corner on this issue.
Yeah, yeah. I get, I have a very, it's, it's positive, but I just wanted to let you know-
Thank you, Pastor Gainesborough. Three more, three more, and then we will be almost done.
Following Pastor Gainesborough is David Andre, Charles Wilson, and the last speaker, Michael Voight.
What does this have to do with the homeless, that we lose 20 police officers a year to Roseville and Rockland? Because the wages are approximately 18%, which is about five and, one-fifth lower here than Rockland and Roseville. While we have the best police in the region, they should be paid properly. Having said that, I was really glad about the clarification about confiscation. Tomorrow morning, the Continuum of Care meets. I've been going there for two years, every monthly meeting with Sacramento Steps Ford and Ryan Lufborough, who, along with Emily Halcon, your, your full-time homeless city coordinator, and Sister Libby, and Lieutenant Monk, and Glenn Schaefer, the head of the impact team, all told me, Jonathan, you're right. We have no place to bring them at night except city jail. It's good that we opened 11th Street Shelter, that's commendable, but it was at full, it was over capacity the second night. Ever since then, it's been 20 to 30 or 40 people over capacity. The officer there told me, and Greg, who runs it for Volunteers of America, a larger facility would be more bang for our buck, which Jeff Harris told us so eloquently a year and a half ago. 13 and a half million dollars of city expense for the homeless is not getting us what we want. Triage center, triage has become now a common word. At the stakeholder meeting for the county last week, 50 organizations, the word "triage" was on every page of a five-page handout. In my final time, Mayor and City Council, triage, the important part of it is the golden hour, the first hour. It's the crisis hour. If we don't get to them, they're lost. With mental illness, it's going to deteriorate. You cannot reverse schizophrenia damage to the frontal lobe. In my final moments, there's two types of triage. One is survival, triage one, to get them out of the rain, out of the cold. Even the upper stories of the parking garage over there would at least get them out of the rain if our current shelters are not full. Triage two, and I'm done. Triage one is survival. The, the point of master's five-point hierarchy, I'm done. But triage two is, as you just said, those that want to process into full-time housing, and that would be the navigation center or something, a triage to navigation center. Keep up the good work. The mountains are moving, praying for you.
Thank you, Pastor.
David.
David, go ahead, sir, before David, and then David will be last.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. You know, I currently reside at the 11th and L-
Shelter. 11th and L?
That's it, that's it. I'm sorry. Yeah, I currently reside at the 11th and L Shelter over there, and, you know, the procedure for the pat-down is, you know, probably takes 10, 15 seconds or something, you know, I imagine they're profiling the people as they come in. If they think you might have a weapon, or if you look as though you may be intoxicated, they send you away. Another thing I want to say is that, at times, the temperature in the shelter is below the degrees outside. I'm not faulting the officers, they're just doing their job. You know-
How can we help you, sir?
I think, I think the, I think there actually needs to be more shelters. What, you know, they had over 20,000 evacuees come from Yolo County and Butte. They opened up Cal Expo for these people. What about we, the people, right here in Sacramento, the city that, that you rule, that you, that we- we reside over? This is where we're going to need the most support.
Okay.
You know, hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm just trying to help.
I also heard you say something about the vouchers that is going to be presented to the people. How do we gain knowledge of that? How do we know when that's going to happen? I heard something to do with the 15th of this month, that they were going to hand out 800 vouchers.
No, no, no.
Nobody really knows nothing in general and suspicious. They're all rumors floating around the homeless community.
Okay, let me try to clarify for you. On the 21st of March, the County Board of Supervisors is going to weigh in, I suppose, cast a vote on this voucher question that has been raised in the joint city-county set of meetings, one meeting. And I understand that the SHRA, which is the Housing and Redevelopment Agency, is going to come out with a recommendation on her about the 15th of March. And so those are some of the rumors that you're hearing, recommendation on the 15th, it'll be before the County Board on the 21st of March.
Okay, what can we do about?
Then it'll take some significant time after that, depending upon the decision to actually get the vouchers in place to begin helping people who are out on the streets or at imminent risk of being out on the streets.
What can we do about the temperature in this alleged warming centers?
Let, your time is up, let's look at that, let us look at that.
Yeah.
And we will, we will report back on that, okay?
Thank you. I want to thank all you guys for what you're doing.
Thank you. Hang in there, sir. Hang in there.
David?
David?
Mr. Mayor, Council. I was very heartened when you said a little while ago that we're about to turn the corner, Mr. Mayor. Can we actually turn on the water fountains on K Street? We need water, water's the human right. We still have water fountains out in this town. I know the toilet thing seems to be insurmountable at the time. I don't know why we can't just have porta-potties that are rented from one of the local places around. That way, people wouldn't be defecating on the streets. If most people have a choice, they will use toilet facilities. But let's get the water fountains turned on on K Street for people before the hot weather sets in. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Let me have our last speaker.
Last speaker.
Welcome again, sir.
Council members. I'm speaking again on marijuana, but the reason why I'm speaking at this point in time is my comments do not relate directly to any of the items that were on the agenda earlier this evening. They relate, but they're not specific to those issues. What I'm requesting is something that I guess didn't, I didn't, wasn't quite clear in my There were council members that talked about tracking, you know, when we're from production. But the thing that I'm really want is data about all kinds of crimes, victims of marijuana use, whether medical or not. I want a database for that. It has nothing to do with whether you license it, school districts, or parks, or any of that sort of thing. I want this database because that's the only way that an advocate could go to the public and be able to try to change things like Prop 64. That can be changed, but it requires data, and that's what I'm specifically asking for. Mayor, you had four items in your moving forward, you listed your four priorities. And the reason why I'm addressing this now is this was not a part of that, I did not hear that to be part of those four. If I'm incorrect, let me know. But that's my real request, that there's a database that connects marijuana to all sorts of crime, imprisonment, deaths, medical, its total impact in the community.
I think you make a very good point, and I should have added a fifth, which is a system of evaluation. Over time, as we move forward, or as we begin implementing various pieces of this, there needs to be a system of evaluation, not just on revenue, but also on the issues that you raise. Is there an increase in crime? Are there additional problems? That needs to be evaluated, absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, that's it. We have council ideas and questions. I know I have one, but why don't we begin with Councilmember Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Try to be as brief as I can. Over the last several weeks, I've been in discussions with the city manager about a pilot program in District 2 that will house potentially up to 200, 175 to 200 homeless people in a outdoor, but inside of major barrack-type tents that would be set up on, initially, I had wanted to, I thought it might be easier if I had offered up property that I own. That proved not to be the case, so we've identified some city-owned property that we believe is in an appropriate place. And I'd like to have that project agendized as quickly as possible for either next week or the week after. And I'd like to ask the city manager to work with both District 1 and District 2 on this project. My colleague, Ms. Ashby, has volunteered to work with us to help in any way she could. And I think it's just really important that, you know, in these desperate times, we do all that we can, and I know that it's the council's will to really solve these problems. And although we may come at them from different perspectives, we have different, you know, proposals, but I think we all want the same thing. Ideally, you know, ideally, we would have places inside that can house everybody that's homeless. But, you know, unfortunately, that is not the reality that we live in, nor is it going to be the reality anytime soon. And so I am asking the city manager to work with myself and Councilwoman Ashby, but in addition to that, assuming that we come to an agreement on how to make this work, to then galvanize resources to clean up our levees, our creeks, our streets where we have the kinds of things that Ms. Tappel had shown us the pictures of, because to me, we can do much better in our city. We can do better than we've done, we're moving, I believe, in the right direction. But I think time is not our friend in this. We need to have multiple layers of solutions for multiple problems as it relates to this homeless issue. I'm prepared to take whatever scrutiny or criticism in District 2 as it relates to this issue. I believe very strongly in it, and I'd like to try to make it happen. And so I'm going to do everything I can, and I'd like the council's consideration when this item comes back in a couple of weeks.
I think we're fine with agendizing it. It's a perfectly appropriate request, Councilmember Warren, I appreciate it. I would add just a couple of things in terms of the discussion. Number one, I think there needs to be a parallel discussion, if you want to talk about your district, about any potential indoor shelter sites within District 2 as well, and of course, throughout the entire city. Secondly, is the cost issue, because as I understand the proposal, that, as I understand it, you've said that this could be funded, if you will, privately, as opposed to the use of.
Public private, public private.
Public private. So you want to come forward, then, with a budget that includes any request for city resources as well, so that can be evaluated? Just think if we're going to, so, you know, the indoor shelter options, if we're talking about District 2, as well as the cost, and I think it's appropriate to continue the discussion. You're pushing hard, I get it. I think the council.
People are priced on human rights.
Excuse me, sir. No, 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 you had a chance to speak. You know, I think you're absolutely right. We all want the same thing. We all want to solve the problem. And it's up to us collectively and with the community to determine the best courses of action. So as long as it's holistic in that way, I'm willing to have, continue to have the discussion.
Yep.
Okay? All right, thank you. Councilmember Guetta.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just a couple of quick announcements here. One, for the folks over at the Golden Palms Mobile Home Estates, we're going to have our mobile district office hours there this Friday, March 24th, at 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. We'll be bringing in coffee and donuts to, and also answer any questions you guys may have. And also, on Friday later that day, we'll have our office hours there as well, our staff will be out there to answer any questions for the Tahoe Park Food Truck Event. So folks in Tahoe Park, if you have questions, feel free to come by there, but this is the beginning of the food truck events, and we'll have, obviously, our PTA, our local neighborhood association, folks out there, every fourth Friday of the month, and helping out a lot of local causes. And then also, on Saturday, March 25th, Tahoe-Talik Little League Opening Day and Community Resource Fair will be happening at the Tahoe-Talik Baseball Diamonds. They're over at 7401 San Joaquin Street, past 65th Street, so if you go up San Joaquin, past 65th Street, you'll find the Tahoe-Talik Little League fields out there. And that starts at 8:30 a.m. and goes till noon. So I hope to see you out there this weekend.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have a few announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday at noon, I'll be speaking at the Clooney Community Center to the ESAC Chamber. They requested state of the district, so I'll be speaking to a lot of issues that affect the city generally, and also District 3, for about an hour's time. Food Truck Mania begins again this Friday, March 10th, at McKinley Park. So every month for the next five months, from 5 till 8, we'll be having food trucks and live music, and they're pretty festive events. And as was alluded to by a community member, there is a community meeting at South Natomas Community Center, 2921 Truxell Road, in the Arts and Crafts Room, beginning at 10:00 a.m. this Saturday, just for community members to get together and discuss what's on their mind. Unfortunately, just so you know, I won't be able to make that meeting, but I hope that David will be able to. Either way, I'm certain I'll get a fairly substantial report back, so, yeah, in fact, I know I will. So anyway, I want people to understand in the South Natomas-North Gate Gardenland community that you have that avenue to voice your concerns, but also understand that Natomas Community Association is reforming, and that it's a true community association, that it's much easier for a council member to maintain a relationship with ongoing. And so I'm hoping that all the people who attend this sort of ad hoc community meeting will organize and sort themselves out and get back into their community association, because I really believe that's how you can affect the most good. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, good to go? All right. Tomorrow, well, as Vice Mayor Jennings pointed out at the beginning of this council meeting, it is Women's History Month. I was appropriately born in this month, so good for us to celebrate these things as we go through the month. I have been on Twitter highlighting local women. Many of you have been a part of that in helping me get those names out and focusing on women who do great things for the city, people like former Mayor Fargo, or LaChelle Dozier, or Rivka Sass, people who help us in the city do good work. Tomorrow is the official day without women, and some of you know about this. This is an effort to really show what it would be like if women weren't there to help in the workforce. I think it's pretty stark on this body if there were no women here. It's a vote of one on whether or not to participate in this, my caucus. And so I am going to participate in a day without a woman. My council office is coming with me. I think some of your council offices may be coming with me as well. Mr. Guetta's staff has certainly taken up the torch. But I will always be available to my constituents, so I will spend this day in my district at women-owned businesses. It will start at Bella Brew for breakfast, which many of you know is owned by a local lady here in Sacramento. And then we will spend our day out there with our constituency. And I just, I know that this day is something that a lot of people want to participate in, but have a varying ability to do so. Just kind of depends on what's going on in your world and who's dependent on you. For me and my team, we're public servants, so we never really quite disappear from work. So we're going to stay engaged in work, but I'm not going to be at City Hall. So I know you'll all miss me terribly for a whole day. See if you can manage to get along. But I will stick with District 1. You know, other things that people can do in solidarity is wear red. Any of you could do that tomorrow, wear red to support women, women who need to be here could wear red, women who need to work because we have to could wear red tomorrow in solidarity. If you can't quite get the day off, but you'd like to do something in the lunch hour, Mayor, your colleagues over at the Women's Caucus at the Legislature are going to host an event on the east steps of the state capitol from noon to 1:00. So if folks want to do something in their lunch hour to go, you know, really be a part of the movement, they could do that if they're downtown. And then the other thing is if you are retired, or you don't work right now, but you'd like to participate in one way or another, you can visit a women's-owned business or shop at a women's-owned business. And for my part, we have put out a press release with a half dozen or so in my district that folks could participate in. Some of them would not be a hardship at all. Massage Envy is owned by a woman in my district, this seems like a wonderful option tomorrow. But at any rate, whatever you're doing tomorrow, please take a minute to think about the impact that women have on the world and the business in our city and in our region, and what it means when they're not there, or what it would mean if we could have more of them, or in some way reflect on the role of women in helping lead our region, and forgive your staff if they join me in Natomas for breakfast, please.
Well, I'll find a way to do something in solidarity tomorrow with you, so.
Excellent, very good. I brought you guys all copies of this press release, too, in case you wanted to see the names of those restaurants.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Councilmember Ashby. Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. There is a young group in Sacramento called the Sacramento Youth Advisory Committee, and they are a group of young leaders that are committed to making a difference in the city of Sacramento. They meet monthly on the second Wednesday of every month from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and they meet at the Pinell Community Center. Their meeting will take place tomorrow at, from 6:00 to 8:00, and we would encourage everyone to support our youth as they work on becoming the leaders of tomorrow. And if we can get over there and maybe speak to them about the type of career that you have, or any advice that you have for young people, it would be very, very helpful. And then on Thursday, March 9th, District 7 will have a community spotlight. We're going to be spotlighting the greatest donut shop in all of Sacramento. At least, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. It's called Manly's Donuts. It's located at 360 Florin Road. We'll be there from 8:30 to 9:00. Come by and enjoy a donut and say hello, and see if you agree with me that these are the best donuts in all of Sacramento. And then finally, the Valley High Neighborhood Association will have a meeting on Thursday as well at Prairie Elementary School from 6:00 to 7:00. You can join that Neighborhood Association meeting, and right after that, we'll have office hours in Valley High. So stop by, we look forward to seeing you.
Lot going on. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Lastly, we've talked at the dais over the last couple of months intermittently about Measure U, which is, of course, the ballot measure passed by the voters in, I believe, 2013 to address the ravages of the recession and ensure that we did not have to cut any more city services. It expires soon, and it's none too early to begin thinking about how we want to replace it. And I'm very clear that, and I think most folks are, that we are going to need to re-up some form of Measure U. And so I would like to appoint a subcommittee of the Budget and Fiscal Committee and ask Councilmember Chenier to lead that. I'm the fourth member of that committee, the chair, but I would ask Councilmember Chenier to lead that under those auspices, and hold the series of public workshops, public meetings, and begin now so that we are well ahead of the initiative curve and timeline, and begin thinking about how we want to approach this in 2018. So I'd like So I'd like, I don't know if that requires official action on the next council meeting to designate a subcommittee. Again, I want it to be public in the spirit of, of the ad hoc, new ad hoc rule, but let's begin, let's get to work on that, okay? Budget Audit Committee, right. And any other members, since it's public, right, is welcome to show up, is that correct or not? No?
You would have a Brown Act issue. You would have a majority of the council if you have more than four.
Can't do it. Never mind, okay? You can watch, any member of the council can watch from the audience. Can watch from their offices.
Yes.
Okay, get the idea. Let's get, let's get going on this, all right? Nothing more to come before the council adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.